I'm going to call a regular meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 at 7:30, 2 P. M. in the Aldermanic Chamber. This meeting has been noticed in two places, including the city's website in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. The prayer will be offered this evening by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Tebow will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Blood allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Klee. Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I'm here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchis and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Before we get into the mayor's remarks, I would like to make a, I'd like to take a moment of silence for the loss of Trish Klee's husband, if you would all. Please. Thank you. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Well principally, I wanted to talk about the budget, which is on your desks tonight to be introduced as a resolution. We are introducing this earlier than last year at your request. The original plan was to come in with this in the, a month from now, but you asked for the budget to come in earlier, which we're giving to you. As we said at the time, because of the short notice on that, we weren't able, we were able to put together the numbers, but not all the other material that goes into the budget, the explanations and all that. You will get that at a later date, but right now you have, you know, the, the numbers that are in the budget, which I will take a moment to address. We asked the departments, I issued a guideline, asking the departments to conform their operating budgets with a 3% guideline, excluding extraordinary items and excluding uncontrollable costs such as healthcare. And the departments, with one, with an exception that I will discuss, have done that. At first, we came to the Board of Alderman with a presentation modeling a budget with a 3.5% guideline. Members of the board suggested it should be lower, so we used a 3% guideline. So City Hall as a, as a whole, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Library have all come in at that 3% number. But the budget is up in total about 5.8% because of the following, I'm going to say, extraordinary items. First, for the first time in a number of years, we have put the SURF, which signifies Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, into the budget. For a number of years now, we had been funding SURF, the, the purchase of equipment, police cars, fire vehicles, public works trucks, things like that, out of the surplus that was generated at the end of the year. But given reservations that were expressed about this practice, we agreed to put this in the budget, and that is a $2.5 million item, which of course did not appear in last year's budget, at least proposed budget, so that it, so that it is, represents a new item at this time. Number two, healthcare for city employees went up, is going up, is projected to go up, 9%, and that represents an increase of $4.1 million, obviously considerably above the 3% we are hoping to achieve for the operating departments. Third item is the risk budget is up 22% or one, nearly $2 million. But most of that increase, I think 1.6 million is the correct number, is caused by a change in state law, which creates, which has to do with firefighters and their likelihood of getting cancer. And the state law provides that when a firefighter gets cancer, there's a presumption that that is work-related. So that increases the worker's comp budget by 1.6 million dollars. So that's a third addition, that's a third extraordinary item. The fourth being the cost of busing for the school department. They are seeing an increase of about 20% or 1.8 million dollars in the cost of transportation. The reason for that is the current contract with First Student runs out this year, and so they put that contract out for bid. They got only one response, that being First Student, with a 20% increase in year one, 1.8 million dollars, and significant increases in years two, three, four, and five, not as big as this, the first increase. We met with the school department a few times about this, asking, we asked them to approach First Student about the possibility of a one-year contract, giving us time to consider other options, but of course, First Student, basically a monopoly situation, again, the only provider, the only bidder, said, you know, did not take, was, was not favorable towards negotiating a one-year contract. Given that the school department has an obligation to provide transportation and that obligation begins on July 1, there really was not, no alternative but for them to accept the single proposal that was on the table. When you put those items together, it comes to about $10 million, that, those being the increase in the risk budget, the healthcare increase, the busing increase, and the SURF being in the budget for the first time. Were it not for those increases, the budget would be up less than 3%. I think the number would be, would be less than 3%. Now, so what I've proposed in the budget you see before you, to partially offset the very considerable increase that the school department is seeing in the busing costs, I propose, I'm proposing to you a 4% increase for them. In addition to the busing, they are seeing significant increases in special ed costs. I think that's a $1.3 million increase. So I proposed a 4% increase for the school department. This will enable them to keep, if they, you know, to, it provides enough funding to keep all the employees they have. It might require some reduction through attrition, but it will enable them, if they want to, to keep all of the employees they have. Now, it does not exclude the possibility that, were they to reorganize or shift job responsibilities, that that could impact some people. What I mean is, and this is a hypothetical example, if for example, there were a teacher at the high school that was teaching, you know, Italian, and there were no students signed up for that course, and they decide, well, look, you know, we'd rather have a school psychologist than an Italian teacher with two or three or zero students or something like that, but we can't reassign the Italian teacher to school psychology because that requires a special certification. It's possible that that type of reorganization could impact an employee, but you would not be forced by the level of the budget we have, we have proposed. Because of course, a number of you have suggested that you did not want to see layoffs, and I think this budget can deliver that. It has no additional employees, but it does not force the reduction of any, as a result, for financial reasons, the reduction of any existing employee unless there were some reductions by attrition. So we have a budget that's up 5.8%. If you compare it to the budget that you passed last year, if on the other hand, you consider the supplemental appropriations which were adopted in the fall and in the spring, and include those as part of the fiscal '25 budget, which you really should, then the budget is only up 2.36%. So that gives you an overview of the budget. Certainly I can answer any questions now or as the Budget Committee goes on regarding any of the proposals there or any of the reasons for anything that we, that we included in the budget. I wanted to also update you on the impact of the federal government. We still are, you know, in limbo regarding many of these federal grants, but we've received word on two specific ones. Emily Marticello, the Emergency Management Director, has told us that the, the federal government, FEMA, has indicated that they are suspending, which really means probably ending, the grant they give to the special police and fire units to provide equipment for those units. Those units are the bomb squad, the SWAT team, the dive team, and then the hazmat team in the fire department. So the way it has worked is the city pays for those particular units in terms of the personnel, but the specialized equipment, which is required and which is fairly expensive, when replacement or new equipment is required, has been paid for by FEMA. That's not likely to continue. Number two, Director Bobby Bagley has been informed that about 180,000 roughly dollars of health grants have been canceled. That, that will have some impact on the personnel in, in that department. Now, I've asked Emily Marticello and Bobby Bagley if they'd be willing to come before you and give you the details, which they're happy to do, and I've mentioned that to President Wiltshire, and I think she's amenable to scheduling something so that you can hear directly from the agencies or, I mean, our departments regarding those particular impacts. The state budget could create additional issues for us. If the House budget passes, the, you might see 3% cut in, this is the House budget, it hasn't gone to the Senate yet, but 3% cut in Medicare provider reimbursements, those go to hospitals, all healthcare providers, Harbor Homes, Lamprey, all of the others. $38 million cut in community mental health funds, cutting funds from the WIC program, that's Women's Infants and Children, the elimination of the Office of Child Advocate, that has to do, I believe, with child abuse, $60 million cut to the University of New Hampshire, $4 million cut to the community colleges, and this is just some of it, cuts to the money we will get from the rooms and meals tax, although we were promised 40%. We, the municipalities, when that tax passed, it's now at 30, but probably that's going to go down. The elimination of the Human Rights Commission, they have to consider discrimination complaints, the elimination of the Commission on Aging, and a cut in the state aid grants for municipal wastewater plants. Now that, they're supposed to help us pay for those things, usually they don't fund it at all, so, you know, there, we might have some impact there, but we haven't been getting a lot of money anyway. Sale of the rest areas, expanding the school voucher program, which does not actually reduce adequacy payments, but diverts funds which otherwise could be used for that. And there's a bill that passed the House to restrict local school districts from increasing spending beyond a certain level, even if the voters or the Board of Alderman or City Council want to do that. We also have been indicated, we've also learned that it would terminate Medicaid reimbursement to school districts. So right now, if school psychologists or speech pathologists provide eligible services to Medicaid, Medicaid, Medicaid-eligible children, there's a reimbursement. Nashua currently received about, about $600,000 of reimbursement for those Medicaid-eligible services. That apparently is going to end. And there are other cuts that I could mention. So there are things going on at other levels of government which certainly could impact our financial situation and our, our community in general. I'd like to thank those who helped prepare the budget, the city's budget team, those would be John Griffin, CFO, Megan Karen, Dawn Enright, Tim Cummings, Rose Evans, and potentially other people who contributed. I'd like to thank the departments for helping us to achieve a budget that, you know, conforms with the guidelines that we gave them. And again, I'm, I will be available to meet with the Budget Committee whenever you request, or others will as well, to answer questions or any, anything you'd like to know about the thought process behind this, behind the budget. So with that, Madam President, I will nearly conclude, but I will remind you that we have two set, public sessions coming up on Thursday, I think at 5, regarding the Elm Street Middle School, as, and the, we're seeking public comment, public insight into the, the two different proposals that were chosen by the committee that interviewed the four applicants for the conversion of that site to housing. Those will be on Thursday night, I believe at 5:30, and I think, I think it's upstairs, and at, it is, yes, and Saturday, on Saturday morning as well. So anybody who wants to go to those, obviously on the Board of Alderman or members of the public, we'd love to have you there and get your, get your thoughts. And that's all I have for this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. Mayor, responses to the remarks, the mayor. Alderman Timmons.
Oh, thank you, Madam President. All that bad news that you just said, Mayor, it disgusts me. And this is what the mayor said. Now, you heard it out here, this is all political, and it's something that's already on, on the desk already. So I know some of my colleagues was upset with what I said before, but this is exactly what I said before. What are we going to do to help the citizens of this city and this country? One of the things, the hands-off movement was great, but what do we do to save our democracy? Because this is all what it is, and it's disgusting. And I didn't vote for this, and a lot of you guys didn't vote for this, some of you did, but you get what you got. And this is what we got, what the mayor had just said, and that's horrible. How do we feed our kids? How do we feed our seniors? How do we do anything? Everything has been slashed. And I'd like the mayor to say, give me some kind of hope other than what they, what they did. What are we going to do? And this is really upsetting because it affect all of us, whether you like it or not, it affect each and every one of us in this room. Because none of you guys are billionaires, not one of you. You sit there and say, oh, I, you know, that Timmons is saying things that's already been said, the mayor said. So what are we going to do to save our city, to save our country? Instead of saying, this is what's happening. I see what happened every single day, I listen to the news every single day, so this is not surprising. It wasn't surprising last year when I read, or year before last, when I read Project 2025. We are in Project 2025, whether you like to hear it or not. Whether it make you feel uncomfortable or not, we're here. So what are we going to do as a city and, and, as a city and a country? What are we going to do, Mayor, just to let our people die? What is your recommending, recommendation? Because I will not be quiet. I will not sit here and not do anything.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you for that. You know, my skin, what's that word, prickly. The Medicaid came up, so I can't miss an opportunity, but quite frankly, what do we do is adapt. We talk to people, we bring people who have experiences with Medicaid, and we bring them to the people's representatives, no matter whose party they are in or who they're represented by, and they share their stories about how the cuts will impact them, not just them individually, their family members, their community. You look at the cuts, 3% across the board for Medicaid providers, yeah, that, that will hurt, but what's going to really hurt the city of Nashua are the funding cuts to the mental health centers. Those centers offer the most in-depth, comprehensive healthcare for severely persistently mentally ill residents of the city, and without their services in place on top of the cuts that they're going to get as providers, we're going to see a lot more mental health in the streets in different forms than we would want to, and that's what a safety net is for, to keep us from having to have these horrible experiences overflow into our city streets and keep people housed, keep people in care and healthy to the best that they can. You know, give an example, Columbia River Mental Health, which is out in Vancouver, Washington, and next to my office out there is going out of business, and they're in a well-funded healthcare state. So imagine what happens in the state of New Hampshire when you cut, 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 and we used to have the best health, mental health system in the country until it wasn't. So it's not a hard sell when mental health centers are closing in other parts of the country, that we could see it here, and that will certainly impact the city of Nashua.
Alderman Lopez.
His responses to the comments by the mayor, so I want to thank the mayor for recognizing that 3% was an important starting point, but that there are historic issues happening with funding and expenses, and I think moving to 4% and recognizing the importance of, of keeping our staff as intact as possible and within the purview of our responsibilities of, as the Board of Alderman, because it's the Board of Education's role to identify the best use of staffing and how to delineate them and to supervise the superintendent in doing that. But I think, I appreciate the support for increasing to 4%. I am wondering what the mayor's suggestion would be in light of the fact that it is likely to be a $600,000 deficit coming from reimbursements. Is that something that we might need to consider as our, as a contingency fund issue? Is that something that's going to leave them short that might later justify reducing staff, something that we should prevent now? I think it's the opinion of many on the board here that we're not going to see better performance from the state or federal in terms of supporting education, and as I think my other two colleagues have inferred, we have to take care of Nashua, and we have to make sure that our services and our city is able to endure this. Are those steps we should think about, or do you think the timeframe for the state budget would mean that we don't know those answers before we put our own budget forward?
So the money which comes back to the city goes to the general fund, so it's not like the school department is expecting to receive directly $600,000 of income, which they will not receive. They get their money from us, and we get the money from the Medicaid. So it just will mean that in terms of the overall calculation of the revenue and taxes at the end of the year, or as we go into the next fiscal year, fiscal '26, we will see 600,000 less in revenue. So it doesn't, again, doesn't, they don't get the money and then spend it on something, it's a reimbursement that comes to the city.
Okay, thanks for clarifying, Dan.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I just want to thank the mayor for diligently going through tonight the numbers and the big increases. Some of them are, are, there's a few of them that are, that are good things, like the SURF, putting the SURF in the budget, and then, you know, the change in the risk pools so that we can cover firefighters who, who get cancer. You know, I think, I think those two things are good. On the other side of it though, you know, you have the busing, you have 4.9 million in, in, in healthcare costs, and unfortunately, you know, I, with, with the, with everything that, you know, is going on in the federal government, that's going to trickle down to us. So if they stop spending money on Medicare, well, then that's going to affect us, it's going to affect the community, right? It's going to affect the state. So what happens is, if these hospitals aren't getting reimbursed from the federal government for those costs, that means the cost on everybody else who goes to the hospital increases, which means that our private insurance goes up. So the insurance, not only here in the city, goes up, but your insurance at home through your, through your private employer will go up, because the cost of, of taking care of people at these different places are going to go up. All of these things matter. All of these things have a domino effect, and we're seeing them start to happen, and we're seeing them right here in our budget, right now. So I do want to say that I, I truly appreciate the fact that you gave enough money to every department so that we don't have to lay anybody off. I think that is an important, I think that's an important principle to have. We can reduce staff through attrition if we have to, right? But to go out and say that every person who's working for the city right now, that there are any number, handful of them, that aren't needed or aren't valued, I think is, is, is wrong. I, I think that the positions that we have out there are, everybody works hard and everybody puts in a full, honest day's work, and, you know, in tough budget times, the harder, the easy decision is to cut, right? The easy decision is to go in and say, oh, we're just going to go in and we're just going to lop off however many people, a percentage, whatever it is. The harder decision is to figure out how to do, how to keep people in their jobs, because you know that they offer a value to the city, and to do it in a way where it's not going to impact the taxes to, to a crazy degree. And I think, given the other costs that have gone up, the mayor has introduced a budget that will do that, and I applaud him for that, and it's something that, you know, I will, obviously, I'm not on the Budget Committee, and I will listen to what my colleagues, as they go through this, have to say. If there's places where we can cut, absolutely, you know, I think I'm, I'm ready for those, those debates, I'm ready for those suggestions, but at the end of the day, I hope we could all get behind, you know, making sure that whatever we do, we leave enough money on the table so that everybody who's working for the city now can continue to do so. So, thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to extend my thanks to the mayor, to the city staff, for getting us this budget when they did. I know we were originally presented with a timeline that several of us found potentially problematic for the work that we're going to have to do, because like many of my colleagues, for my own mental well-being, I, I would love to be able to keep what's happening in I, I would love to be able to keep what's happening in Concord and what's happening in Washington at arm's length. But more and more, as we go on through life, that's a, a privilege that we simply don't have anymore. And so we really have our work cut out for us. So having that additional time to really dig into these numbers and figure out how we're going to craft a budget that continues to extend to the residents of the city, the city services that they've come to depend on and expect from us, I, I think is going to be a huge boon to us. So I'm looking forward to getting started. It's right around the corner on Thursday. And got a little light reading for bedtime.
Alvin Jerry.
Thank you. So, so Mayor, the, the list of, of cuts that you gave us, that you anticipate the state and the federal government are going to enact. You know, since the state budget hasn't been adopted yet, a lot of these, I mean, you've got a pretty good idea of what's, what we can expect. But I, I assume that the budget that you've put together, since you don't know what, for sure what that's going to be, I'm assuming the budget doesn't anticipate those cuts. And if I'm correct about that, so after we adopt our budget and the, the state reduces money that we're, we used to get, and the federal government reduces money, you know, what, what happens then? How do we, you know, how do we, do, do we rely upon, you know, surplus funds to get us through the year? Can you help me understand what might happen there?
All right, so the cuts I talked about at the state level are in the House budget only. So we'll see what the Senate does. But as I mentioned, in the state of the city, the state has foregone a lot of revenue to the tune of about $400 million a year through the elimination of business tax, or the reduction of business taxes, the BET and the BPT, and the elimination of the rooms and meals tax. The New Hampshire Fiscal Policy Institute just came out with a report estimating, and that's a nonprofit, nonpartisan budget analysis agency, which found, concluded that the state has, has lost about one point over a period of some years, but, you know, it's, it's increasing as, per year as, as we go on. I think it's $1.8 billion of revenue in reducing the, the business profits tax and the business enterprise tax. But in direct answer to your question, well, we are assuming some of these, a lot of this, the two things that impact us very directly are the elimination, or the, you know, the, which would, which would impact us very directly would be the elimination of the Medicaid reimbursement for school services. And I believe we've just, we, we're assuming that's going to happen. And the reduction of the rooms and meals tax reimbursement from statewide, from 30% to 25. And I think the revenue projections assume that's gonna happen as well. So we are expecting that we will get around $100 million of additional value out of the, the new properties which were added to the tax rolls as of, as of April 1 of this year. In other words, the new properties get added to the, to the assessments, the April 1 of every year. So we think there's about $100 million there, so that picks up a little bit of money. That does not include, that does not include the Nash Casino. And I believe, my understanding is that that is a very hard property to value. The real estate only would be included in the value. Slot, the value of a slot machine isn't, isn't taxable under state law. So our assessors are meeting with the Nash people, I think, next week to at least kind of begin to talk about what they think the value would be. The reason it's, I'm saying it's hard to value it is you, you need comps. And we don't have a lot of, you know, what other casinos around here are like that one? It's not quite the encore, but it's a lot better than, you know, whatever they've got in Manchester or whatever. So that will add some value. We're not sure how much. So those, you know, that will help offset some of these cuts, and we will, you know, try to do the best we can otherwise.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alvin Kivell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanna thank the, the mayor as well for, for bringing this budget to us. Some of you may have known that I, I went and spoke at the, the public hearing for the BOE last week on the budget. My intention was not to go there at all. And when I did go there, it wasn't my intention to speak. It was just my intention to listen. But, you know, I like career suicide. So I, I did speak because I just heard that, you know, people were speaking and saying, well, the Board of Aldermen and the mayor, they are responsible for cutting these jobs. They say we have to come in at 3%. And so I had to speak up and say, no one ever said you had to come in at 3%. You can give the mayor whatever you want. I said that several of us have said we would not support a budget that had jobs that were currently filled cut, which I think was surprising to most there, that, that I would say that because I was not going to support that. My biggest problem with the Board of Education and the administration is the fact that they don't look at other things outside of jobs to cut. It's always jobs, jobs, jobs. A good example is, and, was social studies textbooks. They wanted to bring in brand-new textbooks for social studies. The social studies teachers said they were fine with the old ones since they'd never get past 1850. And so there's no new, new, new news to present to anyone from the 1850s. So why do you need them now? And they were all okay with the ones they had. They weren't that old. So why are we bringing in things like that? Those are the things I want them to evaluate. The bus situation is a disgrace, right? It only had one bid. Well, the other two companies couldn't hold us anyway. They don't have enough buses to cover all the schools. So even if they put out bids, we would've had to come up with some kind of finagling to get another bus service to do part of it. You know, we're not just doing Nashua schools. We're also doing the, not the public schools. We're also doing the religious schools in town, the BG, I think St. Chris, things like that. So the fact that they came out originally at 22%, and we were able to get it down, or the superintendent was able to get it down to around 20%, is, is great, but it's still criminal that they would charge that so much because they know they can get it, because it's basically a monopoly, right? So, you know, I said, give us whatever you wanna give us. And, you know, Mr. Claffey spoke out and said, let's, and he had a, a very impassioned speech, and it was tense. There were some tense conversations on that board. But he came back with, let's do 4%. And it seemed like that's where it was gonna go. And then it, it got out there to 4.75% amended. That got shot down to 4.7, which then they approved. So I guess that .5 made a huge difference. And they were basing that on the fact that they were told that 4.75 could guarantee no jobs got cut. Even though I was told earlier that it would really take about 6-point-something percent. So I don't know. But, so that's what they left with, and they did vote on the 4.7 and approved. I'm glad that the mayor was able to work out something where it got down to the original 4% and yet still no jobs were gonna be lost that are currently filled. So that's a big win. I appreciate the work that people did to get that down. And hopefully, you know, we can, we can pass a good budget this year where no one loses their job and we keep it as close to that 3% as we possibly can with some of these, these big items that unfortunately we have to cover. Thank you.
Alvin Kelly.
Going last, I feel like most of the questions I had have been said. But I also wanted to thank the mayor and everyone in City Hall who got this to us early. I did have questions around whether this was predicated on some of the cuts. It sounds like some of them are in there. I'll be asking at the Budget Committee each time, from each department, what do they foresee might come up, although we can't always tell, so that we can plan with some contingencies. Two other things. I don't know if you mentioned this one, but they're also looking to defund the Housing Champion designation and grant program, which helps towns to improve their housing. So that was an interesting one to see as well. And I also was at the, the school board. I went to just listen and ended up having a little bit of an academic conversation around how the budget works for the same reasons that my colleague was, was, was talking about. Oh, the mayor's, you know, the mayor and the, the Aldermen have already decided, and they, they said this, this, and this. And I was like, we haven't even looked at the budget yet. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that there has been a lot of back and forth, and there's going to be a good compromise there as well. But thank you for all the hard work that went into this.
Recognition period. I'm gonna recognize Mayor Donchus this evening. Scott McDonough, Scott McCullough.
And I'd like to give that to the mayor. And if, I'll explain to you what this is. It's a thing in Italy. It's a, what do they call it? And that's my headshot, actually.
Oh, beautiful. Thank you so much.
All right, well, tonight we're recognizing Scott McCullough. We all know Scott. He's a, he's been a very active citizen in Nashua for a long, long time. Lives in the city, grew up in Nashua. His parents are here. And we're recognizing him for his participation in Special Olympics and most recently, his trip to Italy where he competed internationally. Now, I have a, I have a, our official recognition here, our proclamation, and then there's a gentleman from Special Olympics who's going to read a letter from Congresswoman Maggie Goodlander. So the recognition is as follows, that the city of Nashville commends Scott McCullough for his extraordinary dedication to Special Olympics and his unwavering commitment to advocacy and inclusivity. Whereas Scott's journey with Special Olympics began at just eight years old, quite a few years ago, right? And, and over four decades later, he remains a devoted and accomplished athlete, competing in bowling, cross-country skiing, snowshoeing, and softball. Scott has taken his talents to the global stage, representing Special Olympics USA in snowshoeing at the 2025 Special Olympics World Winter Games in Turin, Italy. And whereas beyond competition, Scott has been a steadfast advocate for the Special Olympics movement. As a former member of the Special Olympics New Hampshire Board of Directors, he has worked tirelessly to support and uplift his fellow athletes. His special talk with Scott McCullough video series, produced in partnership with BRB TV, which is back in the back, and Nashville Public Television Channel 6, has provided an invaluable platform to educate the community about inclusivity and the impact of Special Olympics. And whereas in addition to his work with Special Olympics, Scott serves as an ambassador for Best Buddies, having attended the 2023 Best Buddies Leadership Conference to further his mission of fostering friendships and opportunities for individuals with intellectual and developmental differences. And whereas Scott embarked on this incredible journey to Italy, and the city of Nashville commends his dedication, leadership, and perseverance. We celebrate his accomplishments and look forward to cheering him on as he continues to spread friendship, compassion, sportsmanship, and fun. And now I, therefore Jim Donchus, Mayor of the City of Nashville and the Board of Aldermen, do hereby recognize Scott McCullough on March 25, 2025, and encourage, as of March 25, and encourage all Nashville residents to join us in thanking him for all his hard work and dedication. Were you gonna get the letter from Congress, the Congresswoman?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mark Erickson. I'm part of the communications team with Special Olympics New Hampshire. And I apologize for this being so last minute due to circumstances beyond the Congresswoman's control. She wasn't able to get this into my email until 5:30 this afternoon. So late, in fact, that I was roaming the halls of this building, knocking on doors, looking for a kind soul and a printer. And I found that in the city clerk's office. Thank you, Mr. Healy. Scott, from the Congresswoman. Dear Scott, I am writing to congratulate you and thank you from the bottom of my heart. Congratulations on bringing home multiple medals and ribbons while representing the United States of America at the Special Olympics World Winter Games in Turin. An inspiration to me and all Granite staters, it is not only your athletic achievements which are wide-ranging and truly impressive, from softball to snowshoeing. I am equally inspired by and grateful for your dedication to and love for Nashua and our state. Thank you for your service as an ambassador for Best Buddies, as the host of Special Talk with Scott McCullough, and on the Special Olympics New Hampshire Board of Directors. As you have said, quote, "Opportunities are out there." Yes, they are out there for all Granite staters because of the work you have dedicated yourself to. Again, congratulations on your incredible accomplishments at Special Olympics World Winter Games and all of the hard work necessary to achieve it. I wish you the very best in your future endeavors. Sincerely, Maggie Goodlander, Member of the Congress of the United States of America.
If you ever go, if you ever go over to Italy, you need, you, you need euros because you can't use US dollars over there. I did the 100, 200-meter, 200-meter snowshoe where I came in seventh because of my rib was hurting so bad. They kept going, go, go, go. Don't stop, don't stop. And the 100-meter came in third. And the 4x100 relay, my coach goes, hey, can't complain. You're, you're competing in a snowstorm. And our 4x100 relay, and we came in third place. And it was awesome. And like I was telling the reporter over there, it's an eye-opener. And hopefully, other athletes will get an opportunity to compete at the next one in 2032, where I gotta, I can't go due to, I already competed in Italy, and I wanna be fair to others.
And these are your medals, right?
Yes.
These are your medals? Very good. All right, well. Well, thank you, Scott, for coming in, and we really, really congratulate you. All right? Good to see you.
What an incredible man. Discussions or presentations?
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of March 10, March 11, March 24, and March 25, 2025, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Linda Laflame, Chairman, Board of Library Trustees, regarding requests for joint convention with Board of Library Trustees nominating Manuel Espatilla for a seven-year term to expire March 31, 2032, and John Kennedy for remaining six years of a seven-year term to expire March 31, 2031.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication, place it on file, and schedule a joint convention with the Board of Library Trustees for Tuesday, April 22, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber.
Communication has been received from John J. Bosver, Chief Executive Officer, regarding Pennachuck Corporation revised quarterly report to the sole shareholder for the quarter ended September 30, 2024. Communication has been received from John J. Bosver, Chief Executive Officer, regarding notice of annual meeting of sole shareholder and proxy statement, proxy card, and annual report to the sole shareholder. Communication has been received from John J. Bosver, Chief Executive Officer, regarding Pennachuck audited, consolidated financial statements for years ended December 31, 2024, and December 31, 2023.
Without objection, I will accept the communications and refer them to the Pennachuck Water Special Committee.
Communication has been received from Lisa M. Foto, Director of Public Works, regarding referrals from Board of Aldermen, Resolution R-25-134. Communication has been received from Board of Education regarding approval- from Board of Education regarding approval of Resolution R-25-137. Communication has been received from Daniel Hudson, P.E., City Engineer, regarding petition for street acceptance, Saddleback Drive.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have two people signed up. However, Mr. Tebow, we are not taking up any action on Penachuk this evening. Uh, now, next I have Andy Pearlman.
Madam President, members of the board, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman, Attorney with Prunier and Pearlman here at Nashua. And Madam President, I have two matters that are on the agenda tonight. Saddleback Drive is ready for street acceptance. The petition is in. My title report is in. We have the correspondence from Mr. Hudson. And so we will be looking for a street acceptance for Saddleback Drive. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have any. Secondly, on behalf of the Clock Tower Place Apartments, Clock Tower is lining up another round of refinancing. We aim to close May 30th. And part of that equation is that we are requesting that the city subordinate its debt that it holds on Clock Tower Place. The debt that the city holds on Clock Tower Place originated as a HUD grant during the good old days when the federal government did good things. The HUD grant was given to the city. The city gave it to Clock Tower. So there's really no money out of the city taxpayers. But that is a mortgage on Clock Tower, and our bank is willing to proceed with the refinancing provided the city subordinate that mortgage to the second position behind the new mortgage. And again, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award lead paint inspection, risk assessment, and clearance services.
Alderman Gavea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and award a contract for lead paint and healthy homes remediation with Alkemy Lead Management in the amount not to exceed $584,370. Funding will be through Department 184 Urban Programs Fund HUD Lead Hazard Reduction in Healthy Homes Grant 54 Property Services.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding purchase of two Ford Transit cargo vans.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and approve the purchase of two 2025 Ford Transit electric vehicles from Grapon Ford in the amount of $136,966, $68,483 each. Funding will be through Department 191 School Department Fund, SURF 81 Capital Outlay Improvements.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion? Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I watched the back and forth on the Finance Committee on this. And I just wanted to, to note that we just had a discussion about millions of dollars that may or may not be coming to the city. And while this is only tens of thousands of dollars, I felt that it was, from the way I see it, these increased costs are self-inflicted. They're self-inflicted because this was originally on the SURF schedule back in fiscal year 2023. We didn't buy it at that time. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. If we wanted to punt on the purchase, I understand it. We're doing it now. And the fact that we are looking to buy an EV as opposed to a gas-powered, again, I think that's a worthy endeavor. But I think it's important to note that, you know, these increased costs from, it was listed at $42,000 back in fiscal year 2023, has now gone to $68,000 for one van, and then we're buying two of them. So I just wanted to put that out there. I will be voting no on this. Thanks.
Further discussion? Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I, it's one of those things where, you know, you try to do the right thing by, the school department tried to do the right thing by getting more life out of the vans that they have that we're replacing now. And by doing that, end up costing us a lot more money. So that's why, and, and we've had this lesson before with the police department. Because we tried and experienced, when I first got on the Board of Alderman back in 2008, there was an experiment that had been done where instead of doing a two-year replacement schedule, let's see if we can get three years out of the police cars. And what ended up happening was, they, they fell into disrepair. They were always off the road. And, you know, we went back to a two-year replacement schedule for those cars. And it makes sense, right? So, and the reason it makes sense is because, again, costs go up, but then you're also spending more on maintenance and things like that. The reason that I'm going to support this tonight is because there's not, although we can't go back in time, right? We can only learn from our mistakes moving forward. And the difference between the gas-powered vehicle and electric vehicle, according to Mr. Smith, is not that much. And the cost, we will make up that cost through not having to do oil changes and maintenance and things like that to these vans eventually. So that, that, that really, that cost difference is going to even out over time. The second reason I'm supporting this tonight is because
Thank you.
these costs will continue to go up. There are massive tariffs that are out there on vehicles right now. And if we delay this, the cost of these vehicles are going to go up even more. And we, and as has been previously mentioned, we have already kicked the can down the road on the vehicles that we're replacing. So now is the time to spend the money to replace these vehicles. And that's why I'm going to be supporting this motion.
Alderman Dow.
Yeah, I support what Alderman Clemmons just said. And also, I don't believe back in when they were originally due to be bought, they were asked to go electric. And I don't think they were available then. Mr. Smith is here. So they couldn't buy them. And these get used every single day. And, and they are in dire need of replacement. And, and, you know, the problem is if they catastrophically fail, then you've got to buy them right away. Well, they're not that available that you can just go up to the lot and buy one. So schools don't get the maintenance they need because they don't have the vehicles to cover the, all, all of their requirements. So I'm going to fully support this. I mean, you know, they would have bought gas ones when they were due, but they were asked to do electric. They had to wait till the electrics were available.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Can we have roll call on this vote? Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Gavea.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Eleven yays, three nays.
That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award software subscription, Plexar One Core.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to accept, place on file, and award a multi-year contract for continuing operational Plexar One Core software subscription with Plexar LLC in the amount of $4,298.73. Funding will be through Department 120 Technology Maintenance Fund, General Fund 54, through Property Services.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award software subscription enterprise agreement.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and approve a multi-year annual renewal enterprise software subscription with Esri Inc. in the amount of $197,400, that's $65,800 annually. Funding will be through Department 120 Technology Maintenance Fund, General Fund 54, Property Services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding million-dollar contract award, long-term management of bio solids.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and approve Amendment Number One to the contract with Resource Management Incorporated, RMI, for management of bio solids at the wastewater treatment facility in the amount of $1,093,176. Funding will be through Department 169 Wastewater Fund, Wastewater Fund 54, Property Services.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding million-dollar contract award, 2025 Sewer Replacement Project Contract Two.
Alderman Gavea.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to accept, place on file, and award a construction contract for the 2025 Sewer Replacement Project Contract Two with Grenise &amp; Sons Incorporated in the amount of $1,577,329.88. Funding will be through Department 169 Wastewater Fund Bond 54, Property Services.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Petitions.
Petition for street acceptance, Saddleback Drive.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to motion to grant the petition for street acceptance, Saddleback Drive by roll call. May I speak very briefly?
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. We heard this in our Infrastructure Committee. We received the approval of the city, particularly our city engineer, Dan Hudson. There was one citizen in the testimony for and against that came out against it, but it appears he was looking for sidewalks, but Mr. Pearlman did guarantee that that was in the loop, and actually, they exist. And so for that gentleman is fine. So there was no opposition to this. So I recommend following suit of the Infrastructure Committee. Thank you.
You've heard the motion. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, roll call. So sorry. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gavea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
And that motion carries. The petition for street acceptance for Saddleback Drive is granted. Nomination, appointments, and elections.
None.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the March 4th and March 24th Special and Regular Budget Review Committee meetings be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 5th and March 19th Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 17th, 2025 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 26th Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. And there being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 18th Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-25-134, authorizing the city to enter into a clean water state revolving fund loan agreement with the state of New Hampshire and borrow an amount not to exceed $865,000 for the Four Hills Landfills PFAS Reach Eight Removal and Destruction Pilot Test Program.
Alderman Dow.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25-134 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
Motion is for final passage by roll call. Discussion. Alderman Thibodeau.
Thanks, Madam President. I just want to make it clear, because there are people that don't get how this works because they say, use the word loan. This is basically a grant. So the money's coming, we're paying the $865,000, but then it's getting paid back to us. So it's really, it's a zero-sum thing. It's a pilot that they're trying over at the landfill. I think it's a good thing to try to clean up some of the PFAS. But it's just, we're not taking out a loan, and there's no interest on it. So I just want to make that clear out in the world before people start freaking out.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gavea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25-134 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-136, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $350,000 of assigned fund balance into Fund Number 7064 Hydro Power Reserve Fund.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for final passage of R-25-136 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gavea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25-136 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-137, changing the purpose of up to $2,200,000 of unexpended bond proceeds from the middle school buildings project to the school building security vestibules safety improvement project.
Alderman Dow.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25-137 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49, and I'd like to speak to it just briefly.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, we had a public hearing, and followed by a budget, and it was passed unanimously at budget, and the presentation was given. And I believe this is very expedient for the City of Nashua to undertake.
You've heard the motion. Is there further discussion on the motion? Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. It was also brought up in the public hearing about supplemental appropriation. I didn't believe it was, but there is language in the resolution that says it is a supplemental appropriation. I did speak in between meetings with the treasurer and write, and she said that she would follow. I still plan on supporting this. I'm just hoping that either tonight or maybe in another communication, we can resolve it, because it does say it in the resolution.
It's not. So
Okay.
That's, that's the only answer. It's not a supplemental appropriation.
Okay.
And I think we can clear that up.
All right. Further discussion? Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I hope this is an honor, but I just want to commend Alderman Dow for all of his leadership in overseeing this project and producing, maybe not personally, I mean, I guess you weren't there with a shovel, but, I mean, he's on site. He's inspecting every detail. He's following every decision that's made. He's communicating to the Joint Special School Buildings Committee. I think the middle school project was a fantastically well-done project. It benefits our community at a time where we really needed it, because I don't see the next four years being conducive to expanding or building schools. So I think it showed a lot of foresight, and I appreciate the fact that there's additional bond proceeds that we can transition to a similarly insightful project. I'm glad we're improving the security in our schools and protecting our children better.
Anyone else? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gavea. Alderman Gavea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yea, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25-137 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-138, authorizing a subordination agreement regarding subordinating city debt pursuant to refinancing by Clock Tower Housing Associates Limited Partnership.
Alderman Tibido.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25-138.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Lopez.
I suspect this is an ignorant question, but through the chair or the president to either the mayor or Corporation Council, does this amend, or does this subordination, will it have any negative effect on the inclusion of low-income housing that Clock Tower currently engages in?
Mayor Donchus?
No. The answer is no, because the owner, and Attorney Pearlman could address this as well, but the owners agreed to continue the 30% affordable proportion that they've had since the project was open in the 1980s.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. I apologize. I didn't have a chance to review the Finance Committee meeting when this was discussed, but, you know, from my reading of the resolution, Clock Tower is going to be taking out a new loan of $30,200,000, and we're going to be, you know, accepting a secondary position to that, and I just want to make sure that after this is done, that we're still secure, that there's still enough, you know, that the property's still worth enough, that we're covered.
Is that a question for someone?
That's a question for whoever can answer it.
I think Attorney Pearlman knows the details regarding the financing.
Madam President, members, again, Attorney Pearlman. Alderman Jettie, the answer is yes, because of the nature of how Clock Tower is broken up in their financing. Clock Tower is comprised of two properties, Clock Tower One and Clock Tower Two. The debt on, that we're talking about tonight is just on Clock Tower Two, and the mortgage that is going to be refinanced on Clock Tower Two is like a little over $14 million. So the city's mortgage that it holds through that HUD grant that we got back in 1989, that's behind the $14 million, not the total of 30. The other portion is on the Clock Tower Phase One, and that really doesn't come into play with what we're talking about, with this request.
Okay, may I?
Alderman Jettie, yes.
So the resolution talks about, you know, $14,800,000 and $15,400,000, and you're saying that's, that doesn't really mean that?
The, the, what Attorney Clark and I tried to do is show the full picture of what Clock Tower is doing with the financing, you know, come May. So we just put all the cards on the table saying Clock Tower Two has a $14.5 million, and then the Clock Tower One has a larger refinance. But again, the mortgage that we have with respect to the HUD grant is just on Clock Tower Two, but the Clock Tower One doesn't necessarily come into play with that, with the subordination. The subordination is only on the Clock Tower Two piece.
Okay, and so.
Alderman Jettie.
So, and on Clock Tower Two, it's 14.8?
Yeah, it's actually coming in lower than that. The resolution was written, there will be no more than 14.8. It's coming in around 14.2 or 14.3.
Okay, and Clock Tower Two is worth more than that, enough to cover the city's mortgage?
Well, every time a new assessment comes out, the owner says, hey, let's go get an abatement, and I say, well, timeout. We just had an appraisal that showed the property is worth a heck of a lot more. You know, it's worth, just ballpark, it's, you know, $25 million, just Clock Tower Two today, based upon the last appraisal from 2017. So there's plenty there.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to know.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 25-138 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-25-052, amended adjustments to the parking ordinances.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend O-25-052 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of amendments made at the Committee on Infrastructure. And could I speak to that, please?
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. First of all, this ordinance, there are two parking ordinances that are in front of us. This is not the one about the Pine Street Extension. So I just want to announce what this is not. What this is, is a variety of updates to parking citations and other ordinances that have to do with parking. In the Infrastructure Committee, my colleague from Ward Nine pointed out that on page one, two, three, the backside on the different violation names, there was a typo that said 12 feet from the curb. Alderman O'Brien said, that's a long way to be out from the curb, so he amended it to 12 inches. So we have that. And then on the back of the second page, we updated the price because they carried over the old fee per parking space on the outdoor dining. This was listed at 500. It was not consistent with the ordinance that we had passed, and that ordinance passed was 1,000. So we just made it consistent. So I hope I'm clear on the amendments of what you're approving.
Motion is to amend. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I also wanted to point out a change that I pointed out, which is I thought that the way that we boarded, how you get your violation was confusing, so this is a much cleaner, if you pay it, it's this much. If you pay it with this much, it had an escalator before, which was kind of confusing. But I did have a question to anyone on the Infrastructure Committee or whoever would like to answer. I know you guys have done diligent work, but under 320-89, Section B, what was added that I'm wondering about is within a calendar year, so it says actually, extending three repeat violations for any public impact, life safety, major life safety, snow emergency, and handicap interactions within a calendar year would be subject to a flat fine thereafter in the amount of $100. And I guess as somebody who had to use those handicap spots a lot, I'm wondering why we're incentivizing or lessening the impact of something that should be so dire, and it's one of the highest fees that we have.
I cannot speak to that.
Okay. Is there anyone that can speak to that?
No.
No.
Can I make a motion to remove it?
Alderman Kelly.
Motion to amend by removing, under 320-89, the section underlined, within a calendar year, will be subject to a flat fee thereafter in the amount of $100.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. I would like to speak to this motion, on the amended motion. My good friends, it's in here for a particular reason, because I am ill-prepared at this time. I didn't have the time to do the research, but this pass muster through legal, and evidently at some point in time, this 320-89 was put in there by the legal department for some reason. In just eliminating it, we're going back in the Wayback Machine, and there may be future problems by taking something as drastic as that. So I am not going to support this as of this right now.
Alderman Clemmons.
So, reading, just reading this, reading the table above it, you have four different columns. You have the violation that paid within 15 days, 16 to 30, 31, and then 90 plus. And then it says, repeat offenses applied to offenses with one of the seven classes of offense defined within the fine structure. So I believe that if you, because these are, oh, you know what, I'm thinking, no, I think Alderman Kelly is correct, actually. I take that back, because I was looking at the first two lines. So I'm going to... I'm good.
You're good. Okay. Any further discussion? Motion is, Alderman's?
Thank you, Madam President. Just so I'm clear to the maker of the motion, it's your intent from that Section B, the underlying text to, you intend to remove that underlying text?
Correct.
So we'll eliminate the fine?
And it'll just read, will be subject to immediate towing and all associated fees.
Yeah.
Correct. I know, but what's, I'm sorry, I haven't been called up.
I'm done. That, I at least wanted to understand the actual motion itself. If you could speak to the intent a little more in-depth, that would be helpful to me.
I'm happy to do so. If I'm reading it correctly, and I am not on the Infrastructure Committee, so that's why I was wondering if there was a conversation that I didn't get to hear. What we're saying is that if someone exceeds three repeat offenses, blocking a fire truck, parking in a handicap, which on our offenses is the highest that you can get, that after the third one, we're going to charge them less. So the first one, you get 350, the second one, you get 350, the third one, you get 350, and then if you keep doing it, we're actually going to charge you less money. That's how I'm reading it, but tell me if I'm wrong.
Alderman Sullivan.
I, to the maker of the motion, I know you want to strike the underlying portion, but when I read this paragraph, it says it again at the beginning of the paragraph.
Oh.
It repeats it.
But the, sorry. The one at the beginning of that looks like it is non-moving violations that are not those safety ones, which, okay, fine, but if they're safety, snow removal, major life safety, you continually parking in a handicap, I wouldn't be open to, I mean, that should be punitive in my mind.
Oh.
Stop parking. Do you remember now?
Alderman Gavea.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I tend to agree with the amendment. I guess I'm just kind of stuck at why this was put in there in the first place, because I feel like you wouldn't put it in there if it wasn't somewhat important to it. So I'll let the discussion continue, but I think there's a higher motion that might be more appropriate for it at this time.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, okay. So, reading through this and having a few minutes to just kind of digest that paragraph, and thank you, Alderman Sullivan, because your comments pointed me to this. Not, if we take that out, if we take out the... So what it says is, individuals exceeding four repeat non-moving violations within a calendar year will be subject to a flat fine thereafter in the amount of $100, and may be subject to towing and all associated fees, parking manager discretion. Individuals exceeding three repeat violations for any public impact infractions within a calendar year will be subject to a flat fine thereafter in the amount of $100. If we took that out, it would say, individuals exceeding three repeat violations will be subject to immediate towing and all associated fees. So there's no fine with that. It's just towing. And I think that's the reason that's in there, is because if we take it out, there's no fine, it's just towing. So this is adding a fine and towing, you know, on top of.
It's on top of it?
Yeah.
Is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Alderman Lopez.
I guess the Corporation Council, or anybody who's more qualified than me, I thought that this was additional fines, as in, you have your fines, and then you're getting towed. If you've done it three times, you're getting a $100 fine for doing it three times, and then if you do it four times, you're getting another $100 fine. Am I just adding that all ridiculously? No one's going to get an extra $200 fine?
Depending on which offense it is, it may be the first three times are at $30, or $50, or $100, or $200, or $250. The, after the third time, it's $100 plus all the expenses involved in towing. So that's probably going to be more.
Yeah.
Now, I will say, the legal department just doesn't go and put these things in. Someone wanted this. And so it was done in coordination, probably, with the parking enforcement people. It may be, if one doesn't think the $100 is enough, eliminating it doesn't make it worse, it makes it better.
If it's an additional.
So maybe you want to say, in an amount of $250, plus immediate towing and associated fees, or whatever other number you want. But to say $100 is too little, making it $0 is even more too little.
Alderman Kelly.
If the understanding is that it's in addition to, that makes sense, and I would be open to a higher amount. I guess the language is also tripping me up, because it says, will be subject to a flat fine thereafter, which doesn't say it's an additional. It says it's a flat fine, and that's what concerns me. Now that sounds like you're only...
And will be subject to towing and all the costs associated.
And associated fees, though, it's not fine. I wasn't trying to make a big mess of it, but I just, you know, I went through this. I was constantly, you know, parking in handicap spots, and, you know, something that's a safety issue, I would want to make sure we're disincentivizing as much as possible. And I just wanted to make sure I understood it correctly.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, my interpretation of this, just looking at this, the language below in conjunction with the chart detailing the fines, is that if somebody's continuously doing this, by the time they get to this $100 fee, they're already out close to $1,000, maybe more, if they're getting their $350 fine every time for parking in a handicap spot, and turning around and paying it. So I don't know where it goes from there, if they do it three more times, other than the language on the final page saying that excessive repeat offenders of any public safety, life safety, et cetera, who have previously been towed for any of these, both paid and unpaid proceeding fines up to the three years prior, will count towards the number of repeat violations. So it's my interpretation that they will continue being assessed the violation fine, potentially as well as that $100 flat fine for every time thereafter. I think this has good teeth to it. I think right now I'm comfortable with this, with the O-25-052 as amended in front of us.
Alderman Jettie.
So I'm a little concerned that, you know, the members of the Infrastructure Committee are unable to explain, apparently, maybe I'm missing it, but it doesn't sound like they're able to explain why this language was added, and I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense to refer it back to them, so that, you know, the parking manager's not here. So maybe, you know, they could review it and reassure themselves that this is what they want, and when it comes back to us, we can, you know, rely upon that. You know, it kind of bothers me that everybody's kind of making a stab as what they think it might mean. You know, even Corporation Council, I don't think was involved. You know, even Corporation Council, I don't think was involved in writing this, so, you know, his office was, but he's not sure himself, I think.
I'm sure what it says, even what it says means. That may not be what people desire, and that's up to all of you, not me.
Right.
But make no mistake, I understand what it says.
Okay. So I'm wondering if the members of the Infrastructure Committee would be interested in having an opportunity to review this and.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you. To bring it back to committee, dilatory. I mean, I know what it says. I saw no problems with it, nobody brought it up in committee, and I assure you, Alderman, the Infrastructure Committee is well versed in their authority. You can sleep tonight knowing that. They went through this particular ordinance with a fine-tooth comb. Alderman Sullivan saw some, I saw some, and everything when it came to this particular question. I thought Alderman Kelly's question to me, why isn't it there to begin with? I don't know, because at one past point in time, this evidently was a problem, and this is how our forefathers saw fit to solve it, reoccurring of it. And what we're trying to do is stop that. And so I am quite content to see this go through. Again, if it doesn't work out in the future, we can always make further amendments to this. But the other thing to take into mind, right now, the Director of the Parking Department has an issue medically that's going to take her a little bit of time to heal. So she would not be able to maybe come to a meeting for maybe another week or two or something like that. So, again, this will delay this particular ordinance, you know, coming up to what is coming summertime, when we hope to have a vibrant downtown with parking. So, again, that's why I say it's dilatory to, you know, to bring it back to committee. The only thing that I can see the committee change is what Corporate Council suggested, maybe increasing the fine. But that could be written at any other time. Thank you, Madam President.
So, could I?
Alderman Juddi?
So, thank you for that, Alderman O'Brien, but, so I'm going to make a motion to refer it back to the Infrastructure Committee for clarification.
Motion is to re-refer. All those in favor say aye.
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 I call, it should be a roll call, I would say.
You want a roll call? We'll do a roll call. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Timmons.
No.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Gavea.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshaw.
No.
Four ayes, ten nays.
And that motion fails. So we're back to the motion of removing the underlined portion of 320-89, Section B. Alderman Kelly.
I understand the motion to refer failed. Fine, then we need to figure it out because it was questioned, and nobody has given a clear answer as to why it's there.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I think this was gone over quite a bit in Infrastructure. I missed the meeting on it because I was ill, so I don't have all the details and all of the sections of it, but I think, in my opinion, we should probably just pass this this evening the way it's originally written, and we can change it in the future. It's going to be a while before a parking manager is back in action, and we can find out. I don't see any harm in us passing it the way it's written, and if it needs to change to get increased or eliminated, we can do that at a later time.
Alderman Clemmons?
Just for clarification, is the motion?
It's still my motion.
It's still your motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just so for the discussion purposes. Thank you. So I, I'm not going to support the motion to remove that language, because I, after having gone through this and hearing a few, hearing Corporation Council and a few other people, I'm comfortable with this, the way that the Goldenrod copy is presented to us, because I think it's in addition to the other fines, and even if it's not in addition to the other fines, as was previously stated, this can come back to us to, you know, if there's an offender out there in March that, or, I'm sorry, we're in April now, in April now, that, you know, has three $250 handicap offenses, that's pretty egregious. I would hope that the car would just get towed at that point, and, you know, again, if this is an issue, we can address it with the parking manager at a later date, but honestly, I think, I think this, I am going along with the interpretation of Corporation Council, which is that this is a fine in addition to everything else, and that's the way that I read it, and I think taking it out would reduce the teeth that this, adding, that keeping this sentence in gives this ordinance.
Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to support the Goldenrod copy, the original, and the reason why is because there's all this other stuff in it that's fine, and keeping this line in it right now doesn't really hurt anything or change much, but I do think that it needs some clear language in there to say exactly what it does, but I think we can look at that in the future, whether it's a couple weeks, a month, two years, but I think it needs to be clearer just because it, obviously, it confuses all of us if we can't, we're trying to decide what we think it means, so, but I'm going to support this just because there's so much other stuff in here that I think is fine to pass, so.
Alderman Lopez?
I mean, as I understand it, it seems to be stacking fines, which I think is important. While I understand the argument that members of the Infrastructure Committee couldn't necessarily identify who put it in there exactly why, I can come up with plenty of reasons why it should be in there. We had a communication, or at least I did, I don't know if it went to the full board, about a woman who was in front of, I can't remember the name, the restaurant over by Stella Blue, which is operated by a nonprofit for intellectually and developmentally disabled individuals, and.
Craving.
Was it?
Craving.
Craving, thanks. And she, her daughter almost lost, like, she opened the door and almost lost the door because she couldn't get out. Now, the complaint was because of snow removal, and the city very quickly addressed that, so I appreciate DPW getting right on that, but the request was, could we add more handicap parking on that street? And I've gone over that with the Parking and Streets Department in the past, and the concern is if you add more handicap parking, that doesn't mean somebody won't use it who might work in one of the buildings all day, or somebody who lives there might not use it. If there's a handicap space, it needs to be reserved specifically for handicapped people, it's already tight enough. If you have people who are not following that rule, or any of the other violations that are discussed here, parking, you know, in the emergency lanes and that kind of stuff, I mean, we see cars not abandoned, but left in the fire lane regularly, so the bus can't pull up to a curb at Somerset Plaza. There's any number of reasons why people need to follow the parking directions, because they're meant for everybody and to manage everybody's situations, not the individual's. So if somebody is getting three or four tickets, they know what the situation is, they know they need to follow rules, and they're not doing it. So I think it's important to put that stack in there and increase the response rather than just saying, "here's a flat rate period," without any kind of escalation. And I view this as a stacked rate on top of the existing fines, and I think that's important. I think we need to do a better job of making sure that repeat offenders aren't repeating.
Alderman Gavea?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, hearing the interpretation, I'm in favor of the Goldenrod copy, and I think at this point, if we're to be looking at anything, we should be looking at the $100 amount and thinking of moving it up. Whether we do that, as my colleague from Ord8 said, we do that tonight, we do that in six months, two years, I'll leave that up to the body, but I think this is a good ordinance, and at the end of the day, regardless of having a change or not, it leaves us in a better spot than where we were yesterday.
My only concern about this is, is that flat fine an additional fine on top of?
Correct.
It should say that. It should say, "will be subject to an additional fine thereafter," not just a flat fine.
Correct.
Seems more clear if you say an additional fine. Alderman Senate?
Thank you, Madam President. If we're accepting that this is in there because somebody wanted it in there, would it be amenable to make a motion to add that language?
We have to give the motion in front of us.
I can't supersede the motion.
I'm happy to rescind my motion.
You can't have a third amendment until you deal with the second one.
I rescind my motion.
Alderman, Alderman Kelly is rescinding her motion to strike the underlined wording. Alderman Senate?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the Goldenrod copy to include language indicating that the $100 fine for repeat offenders is in addition to the prior fines assessed.
I don't think that's what you really want.
Attorney Bolton?
I mean, if someone has parked in a handicap space three times previously and been ticketed, presumably, if they've paid within the first 15 days each time, they've paid $250, $250, and $250. If they've let it go for 90 days, they're way higher than that. They've paid that. If you want an additional fine per offense over and above that, I think you want to say that, not, after that, it's the $100 for each new offense, and yet, it's in addition to what they've already paid. But if you're looking to somehow make the next time $350, and the time after that $450, you've got to say more. Now, the towing and associated fees are apt to be about $400 all by itself, so I don't know if that makes a difference to you or not, but just saying, "an additional fine thereafter in the amount of $100." The word "additional," I don't think solves the problem that I think you might be trying to solve. I don't think it adds anything to, or subtracts anything from fines that have already been paid on those first three offenses.
Alderman Senate?
Well, thank you, Attorney Bolton, for that guidance. I do appreciate it. With that in mind, I will rescind my motion, but if I could speak to that intent, I don't think we can revisit the matter, but this, to me, only greater makes Alderman Juddi's point, that I don't think this is ready for primetime, because we are still kind of tripping over ourselves trying to determine the intent of this, and if we, and if we're not comfortable with the intent of what's in front of us, I really don't think that we should be pushing it forward. And so that's going to leave me with a bit of contemplation. I suppose that on paper, I'm in support of the Goldenrod copy, but when it comes time for final passage, I'm not sure I'm ready to put that up. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you. I was just going to say that I'm going to, I'm fine with the way it is, because fine or no fine, if you commit a parking violation three times within a calendar year, we're going to tow you. I mean, regardless of $100, I mean, that's a pain in the neck, and I think that's a pretty severe, that's a pretty severe penalty. So, $100, yes, $0, I know we talked about that already, not going to go there, but I think, you know, you're going to get towed because you did it three times in a calendar year. I think that's, I'm good with keeping it.
Alderman Clemmons?
So, I just want to, I just want to say that I can appreciate the sentiment of wanting to send this back to the committee, right? And I've been on both sides of that particular debate on different issues. Do you send something back to committee, do you not? I look at it like, well, what is the practicality of doing that, and what are the consequences if we don't? Basically, the consequences on this case, if we don't do it, is that we may be adding another $100 fine on top of the car being towed, to Alderman Sullivan's point. So, you know, I don't think that this fundamentally changes the way that the ordinance functions one way or the other, because the car is still getting towed. So, for that reason, I'm comfortable moving this forward and getting an answer to the question afterwards, and if we, if somebody feels like, you know, they want to come back and amend this again, it can come before Infrastructure at another time, but sending this back will only delay the changes that we want to make in the rest of the ordinance, and I don't think that that is a good, I don't think when you weigh out what the rest of what's in here versus this one section, sending it back and delaying for a few weeks, maybe months, I don't think is a good idea. So that's why I'm going to support the Goldenrod copy.
Alderman Dowd?
As I understand it, right now, the motion on the floor is to approve the Goldenrod copy, the motion by Alderman Sullivan, just so it's clear what we're voting on, and there are no further amendments, so I would hope that we would move forward with that vote.
Alderman Kelly?
I'm just going to make one final point. I did not, this was not my intent at all. I just had a simple question that I thought someone would have an answer to, but I'm going to go here for just a second. The Infrastructure Committee, whoever did this, had the due diligence to look at our base fines and say, something like an expired meter is worth $15. Something like a handicap violation or snow emergency is worth $250. So at the base, no matter what, if we look at this paragraph, why are we only charging $100, which is actually an escalation of those bases if they're not, and we're charging the same amount for something that is, if you look at our chart, is much of a, is a larger offense? And I think that was the base of my question, was, okay, so if you have an expired meter, it's $15, after that, it's going to be a $100 fine after that. Okay, that's an escalation. But if we are, if you are a, you know, a fire, blocking a fire hazard, we're going to say, oh, actually, you know, we're not actually going to escalate that, it's fine, it's going to be the same as whether you parked in front of a meter. I'm not going to die on this hill, I just was, I thought I was asking a simple question, so, just wanted to make that point. I would be very open if someone wanted to look at, at least raising it, and then I could support this.
Alderman Gavea?
I'm also right now, thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
I do not want to raise Alderman O'Brien's blood pressure, but I did want to ask him about the 24-hour abandoned vehicle versus 48. Do the police check and make sure that we know it's abandoned? Like, if someone was, like, arrested, then that's probably included? Do they consider whether or not there's a reason the person doesn't have their, has their car?
Well, if the police are involved with an arrest, such as you say, a DWI stop, it's my interpretation, they generally do tow the vehicle at that particular time, but if the sergeant or lieutenant or whatever makes the decision to just park the vehicle and the person doesn't come back for it, then it isn't what it is. It's an abandoned vehicle.
To clarify my question, if a person were, like, I don't know, arrested for some completely other situation, and their car happened to be left behind, does the Parking Department check and make sure that they know where the person is, or are there criteria for what constitutes abandoned?
I think we're kind of deep in the weeds. I'm not familiar with what the Parking Department would do in that particular situation. I can find out.
Yeah, I'm not going to try to change everything now because I didn't even attend that committee meeting, so.
Right.
Redo all your work, but I would, that would be a good thing to investigate, and I doubt it, but it would probably be good to find out if the Parking Department has any way of knowing whether the person might have been, you know, admitted to the hospital for something, but that's definitely just. That's definitely just a question for the committee to explore, not to change now, is it?
Well, as with all fines and everything, you do have the right to challenge. And I would hope that we, as a city, are compassionate. If the person was transferred to the hospital and the vehicle was towed and pounded, I hope in our benevolence with the broad shoulders of the good city of Nashua that we would probably, for due cost, waive the fine.
Okay. I will look further into that. Thank you.
So the motion before us is for final passage of ordinance 2550.
I believe the motion before you is to amend by.
By golden rod copy.
To amend with the golden rod.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So I'm not going to prolong the discussion here. I think there's enough good here that I, you know, I will support the golden rod copy. You know, but I'm looking at this, this 320-89. And, you know, I see paragraph A says, "Anytime an owner of a vehicle has unpaid non-moving fines totaling $100 or more, the owner will be subject to an additional $100 fine and all towing fees incurred." So I think that gives us a good example of how paragraph B could be amended to say something similar. For example, you know, individuals exceeding four repeat non-moving violations within a calendar year will be subject to an additional fine thereafter in the amount of $100 and may be subject to towing, et cetera. And then, individuals exceeding three repeat violations of any public impact, life safety, major life safety, snow emergency, or handicap infractions within a calendar year will be subject to an additional fine thereafter in the amount of 100 or some other number. And I'm not going to try to amend it tonight, but I, you know, I would, perhaps some of us could make some suggestions for the, to the Infrastructure Committee to consider with the parking manager when she returns to see whether, you know, that, that paragraph could be amended later to, you know, in that manner. But I won't make that motion now. I'll just support the amended, the golden rod copy. Because I think there's more good in here than, than the problems that this paragraph raises.
Further discussion on the amendment. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Sullivan.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O25052. Do I have to say as amended?
Yes.
Yes.
As amended. Could I speak to it briefly?
You may.
I didn't see that coming.
Aye. You've heard the motion. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries, and ordinance 2552 is declared duly adopted as amended. New business resolutions.
First reading of R-25-140 relative to tax-deeded property auction.
Additional sponsors: Alderman Gueye, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman O'Brien. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of R-25-141 relative to the transfer of $200,000 from Department 152 Fire Rescue Account 51, salaries and wages to Department 198 Interfund Transfers Account 89732, transfer to Fire Emergency Expendable Trust Fund.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Gueye, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of R-25-142 relative to the amendment of the scope of services of the Public Health Infrastructure Grant.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on, Human Affairs Committee. Without objection, I'll suspend the rules to allow for the first reading of Resolution 25143, which was submitted after the agenda was prepared.
First reading of R-25-143 relative to the adoption of the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget for the City of Nashua General Enterprise Special Revenue and Grant Funds.
Additional sponsors. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of O-25-054, authorizing stop signs at the intersections of Westwood Drive and Wilmington Street and Westwood Drive and Weathersfield Road.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gueye, Alderman Moran, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure and the Engineering Department. Period for general public comment. We have two people signed up this evening. Stephen Scaire.
Stephen Scaire, 111 East Hobart Street. Good evening. I'd like to respond to the Division of Public Health newsletter, which says in part, "House Bill 377 will prevent Granite State youth from receiving evidence-based medically necessary care that research shows can benefit the mental health and well-being of transgender youth." "The research consistently shows that there is no sound evidence that puberty blockers and cross-sex hormones improves the mental health and well-being of children with gender dysphoria. Nashua shouldn't protect or promote these harmful and discredited treatments." "Countries, medical societies, and international organizations that have banned, restricted, or issued warnings about puberty blockers and cross-sex hormones include Sweden, Finland, the United Kingdom, the United Nations, the World Health Organization, the German Medical Association, the Swiss Medical Association, the Healthcare Investigation Board of Norway, and the National Academy of Medicine in France." "The European Society of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry urged providers, quote, 'not to promote experimental and unnecessary invasive treatments with unproven psychosocial effects, and therefore to adhere to the do no, first do no harm.'" "The World Health Organization on review the evidence base for children and adolescents is limited and variable regarding the long-term outcomes of gender-affirming care for children and adolescents." "The Council for Choices in Finland. In light of the available evidence, gender reassignment of minors is an experimental practice." "The CAS review, England's four-year independent study. There is not a reliable evidence base upon which to make clinical decisions or for children and their families to make informed choices." "The Norwegian Healthcare Board concluded, 'The knowledge base, especially research-based knowledge for gender-affirming treatment is deficient and in the long, the long-term effects are unknown.'" "ACLU attorney and trans rights activist Chase D'Angelo, arguing before the Supreme Court, acknowledged 'There is no evidence in the studies that these treatments reduce completed suicide.' And the reason for that is that completed suicide, thankfully and admittedly, is rare." "The World Professional Association for Transgender Health, which sets the standards, but it's in fact an activist group, had a systematic review conducted by Johns Hopkins. They looked at the preliminary findings. They didn't like them because it showed no evidence these worked, and they asked for these to be suppressed. Boys who like, boys who like pink and girls who play in the mud deserve to go through puberty and mature into healthy adults. Please protect them from exploitation by the medical industry.' Thank you."
Beth Scaire.
Oh, it's a little low. Beth Scaire, 111 East Hobart Street. "During COVID, the Board of Aldermen mandated that we wear masks and the Board of Education closed schools. And unbelievably, we came that, that close to having a 9:30 PM curfew at restaurants and bars, which was unanimously recommended by the National Board of Health. How often did we hear the Aldermen, the members of the Board of Education, the Board of Health, and the Public Health Department cite the CDC as a source of information on which, which these unconstitutional mandates were based? So I was gobsmacked when the April 8th, 9th newsletter from the Public Health Department included a criticism of the CDC for investigating a link between vaccines and autism, calling it a waste of resources. I don't know if that study is wise or foolish, but I was stunned that Nashville Public Health would say anything against the CDC. Haven't we been told all these years the CDC is the authority from which all health wisdom flows? Or is the CDC just another bureaucracy that can do unwise and even stupid things like all bureaucracies do? It makes me sick to think of all that the people of Nashville suffered under COVID public health mandates. I think about how many kids lost out on an education, most especially the vulnerable, poor, and immigrant children. And I think of all the kids who were forced to wear masks, including the youngest kids, the disabled, and kids with mental health problems. The masks were abusive, and the kids can never get back the education they missed during the school closures. And now the Public Health Department recognizes that the CDC is just a flawed bureaucracy. I hope the Public Health Department and the Board of Health remember that and never again call for draconian public health mandates based on edicts from the CDC or any other bureaucracy, and that public health mandates are based on good science and not groupthink or politics."
Committee announcements. Alderman Dowd.
Budget Thursday, 7 o'clock here in the chamber. And please review the people that we're going to be discussing that evening beforehand. You got all the books today, all the cost sheets, or the budget sheets. So please review them so you can ask questions.
Alderman Tebow.
We passed over remarks by Alderman.
You're right. That may have been intentional.
I won't talk about parking.
All right, all right. We'll go back to that. How about remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen?
I won't talk about parking. Oh, sorry. I was, I'm not going to talk about parking, but I just wanted to shout out the Nashville Super Community Shelter. They had their race on Sunday. Lots of people were out in the rain. It was a great event. Raised good money for an incredible organization.
I was the fastest Alderman to run.
Did you park?
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for supporting R-25137. Work will commence on new, on the school this month, so, thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So first off, I just want to congratulate Scotty McCullough. Great guy. You know, he's inspiring. That show that no matter what's in your way, he was able to do what he wanted to do and is doing great things out there that, you know, some of us only dream of. So it's amazing what he has accomplished, and I hope that people take his story as inspiration out there. We need more Scotty McCulloughs. And then lastly, I just want to mention that there was a huge protest on Saturday up at Library Hill, which probably the most people I've ever seen outside of the stroll, winter stroll up there on Library Hill. And I think it goes to show that this city is compassionate, and they care about what's happening right now. There is absolutely 100% a divide. And what the federal government is doing and what the state government is doing, a governor who is from this city is doing to the cities and towns in the state is abhorrent. And it's, it's going to hurt good people. It's going to hurt people. And it's, it's already hurting people. And it's pushing aside people of color, people of gender, different genders, however many you think they might be. It's pushing those people aside. It's already starting to do that, and it's just going to get worse. Today, the stock market lost $6 trillion. Whatever you look like, or whatever you decide, whoever you decide to sleep with, that's going to hurt you, no matter who you are, if you have a 401K. And there's more tariffs coming tonight. So, you know, it's important that people speak out. So that, that expression of people on top of Library Hill was unbelievable. It was in the pouring rain. And I applaud, I did not hold a sign, but I was there. And I appreciate the amount of people in this city that decided to go there and express their disappointment, you know. Somebody in the 50s said, said once, "Have you no decency?" And that's how I feel with the federal government and the state right now. Have you no decency, because people are going to get hurt. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
I just want to remind Ward Five residents that the mayor is having a town hall for Ward Five at Main Dunstable School tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. So please come and hear what the mayor has to say and take an opportunity to tell him what you think.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, again, pile on the congratulations and the recognition of Scott McCullough. The Special Olympics is a particularly important organization to my family. My dad doesn't do a whole lot of volunteer work, but he's, he's volunteered with the Special Olympics since he was around 15 or 16. So we're always raised to, to recognize the special things that they're doing. And it's, it's inspiring to see somebody from our city representing us as far away as Italy and to be coming back with something really fantastic to show for it. And it's nice to see that the Special Olympics is still alive and well and thriving and providing opportunities for people who have, I liked the way that it was stated in the, the recognition period, not so much disabilities, but just differences. That's really all they are, is a series of differences that make folks a little different from one another. And I'm going to try my best to use that terminology going forward because, you know, I, I've got a son myself with his own set of differences. And, you know, I see sometimes how even the simplest of words that we take for granted can maybe bring him down and make him a little self-conscious. So thank you, Mayor, for that careful choice of words. And congratulations, Scott. You're doing the city proud. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, definitely congratulations to Scott McCullough. I used to, when I was in high school, and before that, used to volunteer a lot with the New Hampshire Special Olympics. And so I'm aware of what they do, and I, it's a wonderful cause. And Scott's a great athlete, so. But I did want to bring up, I was, as was mentioned, it was the hands-off protest that took place across the country, really, last Saturday. And my wife and I were attending that, the one in Nashua. There was close to, there had to be close to 2,000 people there. You know, basically out just for a bunch of different things. And, you know, everybody, a lot of people had different signs and different causes and things like that, that they were there. My wife is a school teacher. She also has, was diagnosed with lung cancer. And so her sign was to, you know, support public schools and to protect cancer research, which both are being gutted by the current administration. The other thing that's important to both, all these things are important, but, but the other one that she called out was due process, which was something that I had talked about at the last meeting. And I'm happy to say that the Supreme Court did rule that while, and they said exactly what I said, which was at the last meeting, which was that the president can recommend somebody to leave the country, but that person has due process. And the Supreme Court ruled today, I believe. And the Supreme Court ruled today, I believe, that, or yesterday, that every one of those people has to have a hearing. They have to be able to have a hearing. They can't just be shipped off. And, you know, I don't agree with that Supreme Court a lot, but I agree with them on this one. And it, it renews my faith a little bit in the government. And now I'm hoping that the administration will listen to the Supreme Court, because if not, then we're going to be in a constitutional crisis. The only other thing I, I will say is, again, I, I said this in response to the mayor's remarks, we, we are in for a tough times here in Nashua if, if the current things keep going on the federal government's level and at the state level. So the only thing that we can do as citizens is to speak up, write your representatives, talk to your representatives, get out there, and make your voices heard. And I encourage everyone to continue to do that because change starts right here with us.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. Again, congratulations and thank you to Scott McCullough for his achievements overseas at the Special Olympics. I think, you know, I see Scott around quite a bit, and I know how he trains, because that guy walks everywhere. He, he walks to church, he walks home, he walks to his job, and the guy is just an inspiration. And for him to come out tonight, you know, we started the meeting off on kind of a dour note with everything that's coming at us in the upcoming budget season, and it was great to kind of change the temperature in the room when he was recognized by the mayor. So thank you very much, and congratulations to him. Thanks.
Alderman Lopez.
I just want to comment briefly on the passing of Richard De Silva. He was an amazing member of the community. He was a veteran who served our country. We all know how supportive he was of Alderman Cle. I also know he was very involved in the community and was helpful in decorating Delaney's every year for the veterans, so I just want to express my condolences to his family. I also want to clarify my comment earlier about being the fastest Alderman to run the Soup Kitchen race. I was the only sitting Alderman, but I was not the fastest one because Alderman Moriarty continues to be inhumanly fast, got second place. So I didn't even see him there, but I noticed he was on the list. So congratulations, Alderman Moriarty. And then I just want to congratulate Scott McCullough and thank him for bringing such attention to the Special Olympics here in Nashua. It was, volunteering for the Special Olympics was one of the first volunteer experiences I ever had. They let me cook pancakes as a Cub Scout, so that really got me into volunteerism. When I was here at Riviera as a student, they asked me to coach a, a girl's shot put athlete, and she did not need coaching. She could throw that thing probably four times further than I could. She had like incredibly perfect form, perfect angle, incredibly strong, and she worked very hard to do it. So the Special Olympics really gives athletes a chance to shine. Rather than being defined by any kind of exceptionalities or special attributes, they get to compete and thrive. And it's a great community, and I'm glad that Scott brought us just a piece of the kind of things that they experience.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would just like to send my condolences to Alderman Cle. Dick was a great guy. I only knew him for just under four years, but he was always out in the community at events, always was there, greyhounds, bringing them down the Riverwalk and such. We're thinking of you, Alderman Cle. Reach out if you need anything. I also want to thank Captain Bolton, and I believe I'm getting this right, Assistant Chief Fay. They are both retiring from the Nashville Police Department. I believe tomorrow is Captain Bolton's last day. What a tremendous loss for the City of Nashua. Both of them are great guys. I first met Captain Fay and Lieutenant Bolton when I ran the mobile crisis team at Harvard Care, and they were very involved in the mobile response from mental health care. Oh, there was another, oh, then the, I'd missed the Nashville Soup Kitchen and Shelter race. You don't usually do this because I'm on the board with my colleague at large, but my daughter is making, made her first reconciliation, that's confession, while she goes through her first communion classes, and you only get to do that once, so I didn't want to miss that opportunity. But just real quick, keep, just some advice to, as these tariffs come into, into play, be mindful of, I'm sure everyone's getting them on social media, the made in America stuff. You got to make sure it's actually made in America. I've been going, I've, I've been on made in America bandwagon for a long time, and it's very hard to find made in America from start to finish. And I'll give an example. Sapima cotton, California cotton, grown here. There's probably one place that used to have made sheets, bed sheets, picked, assembled, woven, all in the United States. The last spindle in the entire country closed in 2021, and they now have to ship it over to Portugal to have it put on a spindle and then ship back to make sheets. So be very mindful when you're buying things that are made in America. Sometimes it's just assembled, or it's stitched up, or you might be getting some Georgia cotton that's not that great. So just take a look. It's worth the price to pay a little bit extra, but don't get swindled, because just because it says made in America, no tariffs doesn't mean they're telling the truth.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I too would want to express condolences to my fellow Alderman, Alderman Cle. Over the years, had the opportunity to meet her husband. What a nice guy. His love for the dogs and greyhounds in particular, and that is one of the designated charities that, and I know we did contribute as well, you know. And Alderman Cle, hang in there. I'm sure there'll be a brighter sunny, sunny day for you coming in the future, and I wish you the best. And then I offer my condolence, not my condolences, but congratulations, going from the yin and the yang, to Scott McCullough. My daughter was a Special Olympian, and over the years, I get to know Scott and others, and I'll tell you, what a crew, what a crew. I did a little coaching, little counseling, lot more counseling, you know, but, you know, they are very, very good athletes, you know, to conquer what's going on. They give you the heart and the soul, you know, and it was my pleasure to be with that particular group. As a matter of fact, with my daughter, in her senior year at Nashua High, she was voted NHIAA Athlete of the Year because of her cerebral palsy and running, you know, and continued with it. And I have to thanks to all the running she did at Special Olympics. So again, not just to Scott, but I'd like to congratulate all Special Olympic athletes, particularly Scott. He went to Italy and everything, but keep in mind, there's a whole group of young athletes out there doing a great and fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you. I also would like to send my condolences to Alderman Cle. She, she was very passionate about many things, but especially her family and her dogs. So my, my condolences to her. Also, my, my, I just think Scott McCullough is an amazing, amazing guy. I mean, he comes in here, he's proud, he, he's just amazing. I'm very, very proud of everything he's done. You know, he, he came over and hidden me his picture. So we wouldn't forget him. Great guy. Anyway, congratulations to Scott. Committee announcements. Alderman Cle. I mean, wow. Alderman Kelly.
This is not my committee, but I just wanted to reiterate that the Elm Street Middle School sessions will be Thursday, April 10th, 5:30 upstairs in the auditorium, as there's also a second session Saturday, April 12th at 1:00 PM.
Alderman Dow.
I already gave the budget information.
You did.
That's one committee left, and that's the Health Committee, meeting is tomorrow at the, in City Hall upstairs, and, no, here, room 208, 205.
Madam President.
208, yeah, at 12:30.
Mayor.
The City Academy is going to be held again this year, and it will begin on May 1 for eight weeks. You can sign up on the city website.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the April 8, 2025 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourned at 9:53 PM. Thank you, everyone. Listen to everybody.